Testing, testing, testing. Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
We'll be in the office today.
Are we good?
Yep. Okay, everybody else?
Can I meet this time quick? How's this?
Make sure your thing's not upside down.
We all left.
Don't panic, CTV, because they just arrived and this is their program.
There you go. Michelle?
Michelle?
Thanks, George.
Good morning, cats.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of the public to take their seat, as well as members of council, we'll start the meeting in just a moment. On va commencer la réunion dans...
We'll start the meeting in one minute.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. La réunion, it's called...
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the meeting.
Meeting of January 27, 2016. For those who are able to, could you please rise and remain standing for a moment of reflection? And remain standing for the national anthem. Thank you. If you could remain standing, I'll ask councillor Catherine McKenney to introduce some very special guests who are here to sing our national anthem. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, our anthem will be sung by students from Centennial Public School. These students are in grade five and six in a middle French immersion program at Centennial Public. They began French immersion in grade four, and many are learning French as their third language. Centennial is a small kindergarten to grade six school right in the heart of Centertown. The community is diverse in its languages and cultures. Centennial emphasizes the development of social, personal, and academic strengths of all their students, and is proud of their commitment to inclusion and kindness. I'm honored to share these students and their talents with you today.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. Trouver du tort in all our sons commencent. As on par, il faut des paix, il sait porter la voix. Ton histoire est une épopée, des plus brillants escoeurs. Lord, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very, very much to the students of Centennial. When I met them out in Jean Pigott Hall, some of the students said, can we stay for the meeting? I don't think you want to stay for the meeting, but you're more than welcome, but I think your teacher wants you to go back to school. And I know another student wanted to go and have... Another student wanted to go and have Beaver Tales, too. So I wouldn't want to be the teacher in this situation, but you've done a great job. So let's give a big round of applause to Centennial Public School. Merci beaucoup. At this time, I would invite Ms. Pamela Turignol to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award, along with Pamela's city councillor, David Cherneschenko. If you can come on up here, Pamela, and welcome. And you have members of your family and friends with you here today. And thank you, nice to see you again. And councillor Cherneschenko is coming along.
With the start of the new year, many in the city will be making New Year's resolutions, and our city builder recipient would be a great resource. As the founding president of the National Capital Vegetarian Association in 2007, Pamela remained on the board until last year. Under her leadership, the organization has expanded to offer a range of events, including partnering with other organizations such as Veg Fest, Potlucks, and fundraisers. Sous son leadership, l'organisation grandit et offre...
Under her leadership, the organization has expanded to offer a range of events, including partnering with other organizations such as Veg Fest, Potlucks, and fundraisers.
...access to credible resources and peer supports related to a plant-based lifestyle, all while being solely funded by donations and partnerships while being run exclusively by volunteers. Pamela also co-founded the Ottawa Veg Fest in 2009, which is a great event, and continues to volunteer to support the annual event, which has grown to attract thousands of visitors. With a particular focus on vegan and vegetarian lifestyles, Pamela builds and leverages relationships to benefit the health, wellness, and sustainability in our community. Pamela is also passionate about animal welfare, fostering dogs for "Sit With Me" and caring for orphaned baby squirrels for the Rideau Valley Sanctuary. Despite how active Pamela is in the community, she still finds time to blog about vegetarian, vegan, health, wellness, fitness, and sustainability issues. She can be found authoring online for The Huffington Post or for her own self-titled website.
She can be found authoring online for The Huffington Post or on her self-titled website.
Thousands of hours to support vegetarian and wellness advocates and organizations. Pamela a donné des milliers...
Pamela has volunteered thousands of hours to support vegetarian and wellness advocates and organizations.
Pamela builds relationships with and between seasoned volunteers and the next generation. Pamela, thank you so much for the great work that you do. You're a worthy recipient of the first City Builders Award for 2016. Congratulations. Felicitations.
I'll try. Yeah, I forgot my sheet of paper. Thank you, Mayor Watson and city councillor, for this honor. I actually grew up on a farm, in farm country. So eating and using animals was just as normal as breathing. So I'm a little bit of an unlikely vegan, if you will. About 15 years ago, I became aware of the immense environmental impact that our appetite for eating animals and using animals has. And I realized that I had to act. This knowledge and the changes to my diet that followed led me to be able to open my heart fully to animals. With this switch, I also became painfully aware of how marginalized those of us who issue harming animals actually are by our society. And this has been a driving force for my actions. I realized the importance of having community support and offering advocates constructive opportunities to engage the public in discussion around the ethics of using animals and the many benefits of not doing so. This includes a growing body of scientific evidence in favor of the health benefits. So I decided to make myself a visible representative for this way of living so that others might feel comfortable in following suit with a vegan lifestyle, if that's what they wanted to do. I'm pleased to say that as a society, we've come a long way. Veganism has tentatively stepped into the mainstream. And I believe that 2016 is the year that veganism and its values will become not only widely accepted, but also put into practice. I hope to see individuals, but also companies and public institutions, such as the city of Ottawa, embracing and supporting these values in practical and concrete ways. We have an opportunity to build upon this momentum to create a kinder and healthier society, and I hope many of you will join me. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, and happy new year. Bonjour et bonne année à tous.
Good morning and happy new year.
A healthy and restful Christmas and holiday season. I also want to welcome those in attendance for joining us this morning, and I see the Centennial students have joined us, so thank you for staying with us. Colleagues, as I said in last year's State of the City speech, 2015 was a year of momentum. And 2016 will be a year of collaboration, working together for an even better city. Before we look ahead, let's review some of our accomplishments from the last 12 months. Nous avons commencé les travaux de la cour...
We broke ground on the revitalized Arts Court and expanded Ottawa Art Gallery.
Revitalized Arts Court and expanded Ottawa Art Gallery. We began work on the Innovation Center at Bayview Yards, and we moved forward with LRT construction on time and on budget. And in front of me, I have one piece of one of the rails of light rail transit, something that reminds us that this dream is quickly becoming a reality. We also saw several community projects completed. We opened our fifth bridge in three years, the Adawa Crossing over the Rideau River. We also opened the Miracle League of Ottawa Accessible Baseball Field. And we unveiled a full-size rendering of the Alstom Citadis Spirit Train in the Aberdeen Pavilion. 2015 was also a big year for our sports franchises. Baseball returned to the nation's capital with the Ottawa Champions in a refurbished RCGT Park. The Ottawa Fury FC came very close to capturing the North American Soccer League championship, and the Ottawa Red Blacks made it into the Grey Cup. Ottawa's first Grey Cup appearance, by the way, since another Trudeau was prime minister. I'm proud that we have strengthened our local sports industry through projects like Lansdowne Park and the baseball stadium. Residents really have rallied behind our sports franchises. Last year, we also hosted a number of major events to the direct benefit of our local economy. 2015 saw Ottawa host the FIFA Women's World Cup at Lansdowne and the Canadian Little League Championships in Barhaven. These major events will prepare for an exciting calendar of events that is still to come. The 2016 Briar, the 2016 One Young World Conference, hosting the Canadian Women's Hockey Championships this year and next year, 2017 FCM and AMO Conferences, 2017 and 2018 Canadian Track and Field Championships, the 2017 Roar of the Rings, which is the Olympic qualifying for curling, the 2017 Canadian Canoe and Kayak Championships, the 2017 Juno Awards, Les Prizes Juno, the 2017 Ladies Professional Golf Association, and the 2017 Red Bull Crashed Ice. And it remains my hope that we will be able to add the 2017 Grey Cup and an NHL outdoor game to that impressive list as well.
And it remains my hope that we will be able to add the 2017 Grey Cup and an NHL outdoor game to that impressive list as well.
It's our Bid More, Win More, Host More Tourism Strategy. I'm pleased that this plan has been a huge success. I want to thank our 2017 co-chairs, councillors Flury and Cloutier, and our entire 2017 team under the able and creative leadership of Guy Leflamme. It probably feels like we've been talking about 2017 for some time. Some people have actually joked that they're looking forward to 2018 even more because it means I will stop talking about 2017. Today, I'm pleased to announce that the very first event of our 2017 calendar will be a New Year's levy at City Hall, a first for our city. We will gather as a community on January 1st to get the year started on the right note. From there, we'll set off for the year and welcome the world to our city. Ce sera le cours d'envoi d'un année...
This is a year where we host the world.
...and job creation, they're also important showcases for our city. A city that will become even stronger in the years ahead. I am even more confident of this any time I sit down with a minister or other elected officials from the federal and provincial governments. When you look at what's happening at the federal and provincial levels, you cannot help but get a sense that the stars are aligning in many ways. There's a new sense of optimism. For quite some time, municipalities like Ottawa have called for increased investment in community priorities such as housing, community facilities, and transit. And finally, it looks like we have all three levels of government agreeing on these issues. It presents us with a unique opportunity in the months and years ahead. Il s'agit d'une occasion unique à ces yeux.
This is a unique opportunity for the years to come.
There is 2016 will be a year of collaboration. Let me tell you how. This year, we will host two important summits for the future of our local economy. You may recall that in the past, we've hosted summits on topics such as youth and seniors with very positive, tangible, and meaningful results. I like these events. They bring together the right people at the right time, and they set multi-year goals for how we will be successful. We'll host the tourism... We'll host a tourism summit this spring.
We will host a tourism summit this spring.
discussion will be to focus on long-term growth strategy for our third-largest industry. Yes, we have a solid game plan for 2017. That game plan has attracted millions in private sector sponsorship to ensure that we will make it a year to remember. But we need to avoid a possible 2017 hangover by being ready to build upon that success year over year. I've asked councillor Jean Cloutier to be the chair of that summit. At the event, we will be collaborating with our key partners such as Ottawa Tourism, major facility owners, sports franchises, and arts and festival groups. Let's come up with some winning strategies to ensure that we keep the momentum growing. As for the second summit, in the fall, we'll host a summit on education and the economy.
In the fall, we will host a summit on education and the economy.
Ottawa is blessed with one of the most educated workforces in the world. We are a knowledge-based economy. We're often recognized as having the most creative and innovative entrepreneurs and workers in the country, and in fact, Ottawa is home to more engineers, scientists, and PhDs per capita than any other city in the entire country. This is, of course, bolstered by our excellent colleges and universities, which are significant contributors to economic growth in our city. When you look at all of this, there's a big opportunity here. Let's sit down with these education leaders to talk about the future of our economy.
Let's sit down with these education leaders to talk about the future of our economy.
Colleagues, councillor Riley Brockington, a former school trustee, has accepted my invitation to chair this summit. At the event, we will be asking some important questions. How can we make the most of our new Innovation Centre? How can we better collaborate with researchers and skilled tradespeople to ensure we stay ahead of the curve? And how can we attract and retain the best and brightest students and workers? These two summits were election commitments that I'm pleased to see move forward in 2016. Winners in the economy of tomorrow will depend upon those who work now, or those who know, rather, how to make connections and work together. Now, we've seen some of that success when we've collaborated with our sister city, Beijing.
We've seen some of that success when we collaborated with our sister city, Beijing.
rural economic development missions to China during my time as mayor, and each time we have come back with agreements and leads for our local businesses in the millions of dollars. I'm pleased to announce today that I'll be leading another such trade mission in 2016, this time to India. At over 1.2 billion people and a large middle class, India is an important market for our city to have a presence in. Ottawa's business community has made it clear to me that they have the potential for significant growth in India. Further, the city of Ottawa has growth potential as a major tourism destination. This delegation to India will be our first for our city.
This delegation to India will be the first for our city.
that there has already been a strong response to the mission amongst our business leaders. This delegation will feature companies like Ottawa's Ion Wireless. They are a local business looking to build on the high bandwidth and Wi-Fi products they have already deployed for public and private sector clients in India. Representatives from the company are here today, and they're joined in the gallery by members of our great Indo-Canadian community who are supportive of this important trade mission. Thank you very much for being with us today. That's collaboration on a global scale. Now let's look at collaboration on a community.
Now let's look at collaboration on a community scale.
This year, we'll move forward with our Canada 150 Groves Project. You may recall that this is one of our strategic initiatives that council supported, and it will be a special project for 2017. As we celebrate Canada's 150th birthday, there will be great ways we will leave a legacy for future generations. A Canada 150 Grove will be a grove of 150 maple trees in each of our 23 wards. These will be native Canadian, sugar, red, and silver maple trees. In 2016, staff will work with members of council to identify suitable locations in their ward. Then we'll plant the groves in the spring and fall of 2017. It is my hope that we will collaborate with community associations, schools, and other interested groups as we pass along this gift to our community during Canada's sesquicentennial. The Canada Groves Project is in addition to our collaboration with Ecology Ottawa and the 1 Million Tree Campaign that Tree Ottawa has well underway in collaboration with the city. We'll also work to make our communities even safer.
We will also work to make our communities even safer.
More of this effort will be the 25 new police officers we approved in the 2016 budget. Also, under the leadership of our police and crime prevention chairs, councillors El Chantieri and Cadri, we will continue our efforts with our gang exit strategy. We know that gang and gun violence will not be solved in one month or even one year. It's a complex social issue that requires constant attention, but we will continue to show these young men and women that there are better options out there. 2016 will also see the city begin to roll out the first of 20 new red light cameras that we'll install before the end of the term. Every member of council knows that road safety is a top concern to neighborhoods across the city. It's also an issue that requires constant attention. We want to make sure that all of our road, path, and sidewalk users feel safe. These red light cameras will be another tool we can use to ensure streets are safe for everyone.
These new red light cameras will be another tool we can use to ensure our streets are safe for everyone.
has to implement traffic calming measures in their own wards. Of course, some of the collaboration I've talked about is in addition to the important work being done already by many of you around this table. Let me give you a couple of examples. I've admired the hands-on approach that councillor Bob Monnet has been using to drive economic development in Orleans. I took part in a very informative real estate tour of the East End where he brought realtors and other potential investors on a bus tour to see firsthand the available land and development sites in his ward. It's the same tour that councillor Monnet has taken potential investors on many times. This is a sort of hands-on collaboration that will lead to real results for our local economy.
This is the sort of hands-on collaboration that will lead to real results for our local economy.
Kudos to councillor Jan Harder, Chair of our Planning Committee. She's collaborating on two related projects: Building Better Smarter Suburbs and the Infrastructure Standards Review. These are very important to the quality of life of our residents and financial sustainability of our city. Looking ahead, the Planning and Growth Management Department has some important collaboration initiatives on its work plan. As a result, we will see stronger community and stakeholder engagement and continued progress in improving the caliber of planning proposals in the months and years ahead. Let me give you another example of a councillor-leading economic development. Councillor Alan Hubley has raised the idea of allowing local businesses and entrepreneurs to pilot their technologies at City Hall. After all, with a significant number of employees and many lines of businesses, the city of Ottawa would be a perfect laboratory to test new products, technologies, and ideas.
The city of Ottawa would be a perfect laboratory to test new products, technologies, and ideas.
new program in our Economic Development and Innovation Department called the Innovation Pilot Program. To date, I'm pleased to update you that the city has received nearly 50 applications. We have selected five of them to pilot. The city will be announcing the successful participants in the weeks ahead. I think you'll be very impressed by the quality of the innovation and ideas of our local entrepreneurs. We'll also be collaborating more on efforts to sell surplus properties in 2016. These efforts will be led by councillor Marion Wilkinson, Chair of the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation. There are unneeded properties in many parts of our city.
There are unneeded properties in many parts of our city.
Avenue in Alta Vista, there is a site which used to house a water tower but that has sat vacant since 2002. Finally, this past fall, the site was put up for sale for $1.6 million and has generated significant interest from the private sector. When they sit idle, these types of properties are a double loss for taxpayers and for the city of Ottawa. We don't receive one-time revenue for the sale of a property, and we aren't receiving the payment of any property taxes on an annual basis. We'll aim to improve that situation in 2016.
We will aim to improve the situation in 2016.
Also, since 2016 will be the year of collaboration, there's no better example of collaboration than music. Councillor Jeff Leeper has accepted my invitation to be my representative on the local host committee for the 2017 Juno Awards. He is working hard with the Ottawa Music Industry Coalition to bring together members of our music community. Now, when we host the Junos in 2017, we want to make sure everyone in all parts of the city has an opportunity to take a part in this, rather, part in this important collaboration and celebration of Canadian music talent. The two co-chairs of our junior local host committee are with us here today in the gallery, and I'd like to thank them for accepting this role and for their hard work on this important celebration. We need to use this event to strengthen and grow our economy for years to come. Here's another example. Councillor Minnick, our sports commissioner, has been working closely with Ottawa Tourism and our bid office to identify potential events we can bring to Ottawa. As you know, we don't secure these events overnight.
As you know, we don't secure these events overnight.
takes years of work. In 2016, he will lead an exploratory effort for a potential bid for the Canada Summer Games in 2021. The last Canada Summer Games in Sherbrooke in 2013 attracted over 16,000 visitors. It had a local economic impact of $165 million. Now, if we decide to bid on and win this prestigious event, it would mean the potential to upgrade some of our aging sports facilities alongside our federal and provincial partners. We look forward to considering a bid on this exciting event. As well, councillor Kakish has accepted my invitation to be the city of Ottawa's special liaison on refugee settlement. Fluent in Arabic, councillor Kakish will work with and liaise with refugee settlement groups like Refugee 613 and Ottawa Catholic Immigration Services. He will also work with staff to monitor the progress of our new residents and the progress they're making to integrate, especially after their first 12 months here. And he will coordinate a community welcome celebration and, if necessary, fundraising to help with resettlement costs. It's not hard to be touched by the amazing support we have seen in our community dealing with the refugee crisis. To date, we have welcomed more than 500 refugees right here in Ottawa.
To date, we've welcomed more than 500 refugees here in Ottawa.
share with you one of my favorite stories. Two Sundays ago, I was invited to a very special community event at McNab Community Center. The event was organized by former Vietnamese refugees who have since raised a generation of children in our beautiful city. The purpose of this event: to raise funds to support the sponsorship of Syrian refugees. To see this generosity once shown to these people come full circle many years later was truly a beautiful thing. And it's one of the many examples of Ottawa's residents showing their compassion for our new neighbors. In Manetique in councillor Moffat's ward, Mary Barr and her Quilts for Kids program at the Manetique United Church are making blankets for newly arrived Syrian refugee children. In Old Ottawa South, barber Ali Sultan is offering free haircuts to refugees at his Opus Barber Shop. These are the stories that I'm very proud to tell you about and to read about because they really speak volumes of the big heart that Ottawa has, and Ottawa really is putting its best foot forward. The refugees are now arriving, but we know that this is only the first step. We need to make sure they have the opportunity to grow and participate as full members of our Ottawa family. I also want to thank councillor David Chernyschenko for his leadership on Lansdowne Park transportation issues. He has worked closely with the Glee, Old Ottawa South, and the surrounding communities to ensure transportation to, from, and within the site will continue to improve. According to a survey by the Glee Community Association, a full 70% of respondents say they use Lansdowne either regularly or frequently.
Obviously, Lansdowne is becoming a cornerstone of that great community.
also the kind of collaboration we will continue to do in 2016. It's important to also recognize the past collaboration from which we have all benefited. Max Keeping was one of our city's great collaborators, whether as a father, friend, grandfather, public figure, journalist. Max was a true bridge builder and brought people from all walks of life together. To recognize these contributions, I'm announcing that I'll be bringing forward a proposal to the Commemorative Naming Committee to rename the pedestrian and cycling bridge near Coventry Road over the 417 as the Max Keeping Bridge. This bridge links the wards of councillors Neusebaum and Cloutier and stands not far from the Cancer Survivors Park and Chio. And as you know, Max was a big supporter of baseball and, of course, Chio. The bridge serves RC GT Park and will soon serve thousands of people when the LRT station at Tremblay opens. I think this would be a perfect fit to recognize a man who has given so much to our community.
It would be the perfect fit to recognize a man who gave so much to our community.
I want to recognize the presence in the audience of several members of Max's family who have joined us here today, and very pleased to see some of Max's former colleagues, Timothy Walker and Carol Anne Meehan, who have also joined us with Max's family. So thank you very much for being with us here today. I also want to announce a second recognition that will come forward in 2016. The Right Honourable Beverley McLaughlin is the longest-serving Chief Justice of the Supreme Court in the history of our country. She is also the first woman to hold this post. The Chief Justice has been at the center of some of the most significant legal decisions in Canada's history. I'm delighted to tell you that the Chief Justice has accepted my offer to receive the key to the city. She will receive our highest civic honor at a ceremony on March 22nd of this year, and she will do as a role model and a leader and a nation builder who deserves to be recognized by the city of Ottawa. Looking to the year ahead, there will be no bigger initiative in 2016 than work to expand light rail transit to the nation's capital. Now, let's not forget, just five years ago, we did not have a clear plan for light rail.
Just five years ago, Ottawa did not have a clear plan for light rail.
It may not ever happen. Well, fast forward to today, several kilometers of rail have been installed, the downtown tunnel is nearing completion, and the trains are being assembled literally as we speak. That's progress we can be very, very proud of. Now, how did we get here? Well, we set a plan, and we stuck to it. We were consistent, and we did this, and as we did this, we built confidence in our vision for LRT. This plan and this confidence were crucial to gaining the support from the public and private partners. All partners, all parties at all levels of government have lined up to support Stage Two of LRT. In 2015, we saw two big milestones reached. We signed the historic 100-day agreement with the NCC. This was due to the hard work of all parties, including the city's representatives on the committee, councillors Taylor, Blay, and Egli, as well as the great work of Kent Kirkpatrick. The second milestone came with our unanimous approval of Stage Two project by city council. This year, we'll continue to advance this important project.
This year, we will continue to advance this important project.
collaborate with our federal and provincial partners to secure funding agreements. We will also make the case that the trim road and airport extension should be included in this project. If we can secure funding commitments this year, we can expect to move into procurement in late 2016 or early 2017 for Phase Two. Working together, we'll expand the benefits of LRT across the city. The project will bring rail as far west as Bay Shore Shopping Centre, as far east as Plac d'Orléans, and as far south as Riverside South. When we open the Confederation Line in 2018, we want to turn around and pick up the shovel to break ground on Phase Two of the LRT project. Phase Two will bring close to 70% of the city's population within five kilometers of light rail by 2023. Now, LRT is the single most important step we can take as a community to enhance the quality of life for generations to come. Of course, our investments in light rail transit are enhanced by how we're also building other active transportation infrastructure in our city. We'll break ground on the first part of the O'Connor Bike Lanes later this year.
We'll break ground on the first part of the O'Connor Bike Lanes this year.
will serve as a north-south complement to the highly successful Lorient Bike Lanes, which has now registered over 1.7 million trips and counting. We'll also begin to install bike lanes on Mackenzie Avenue near the U.S. Embassy in partnership with the embassy and the NCC. Looking to the West End, we'll move forward with the construction of the Bay Shore Moody Transitway Extension in 2016. This will be an important transit improvement for residents traveling to and from the West End. You will recall that this is a 100% municipally-funded project because we did not wait You will recall that this is a 100% municipally funded project because we did not want to improve, or rather, we did not want to wait to improve transit for Canada residents. We'll also advance design work on the Fifth Avenue-Clegg Street pedestrian and cycling bridge. This connection has been needed for quite some time.
This connection has been needed for quite some time.
...the revitalized Lansdowne Park. It is my hope that we'll be able to secure a funding agreement with upper levels of government this year or next. Doing so would build upon the already historic investments we've made in transit and active transportation in recent years. These are the biggest contributions we can make to fighting climate change and protecting our environment. Speaking of which, in 2016, we'll move forward with our top environmental priority with the Ottawa River Action Plan. We'll break ground on the final portion of the project, the combined sewage storage tunnel, and when commissioned, this project will mean we will pass along the gift of a clean Ottawa River to the next generation. Also in 2016, we can also be excited by the steps we'll take towards a new main library
We can also be excited by the steps we'll take towards a new main library branch.
Ottawa Public Library released a request for expression of interest for a new main facility. The reaction in the market and in the community was more positive than we could have ever imagined. Library and Archives Canada stepped forward as a potential partner, and we've also learned yesterday that the proponents for the redevelopment of Lansdowne Flats, both of them, are also very interested in our project, and this, of course, is very promising. Under the great leadership of Councillor Tim Tierney, the Chair of our Ottawa Public Library Board, we will continue to engage with the community and potential partners to make this dream a reality. It is my expectation that the new main library will be a truly regional facility enjoyed by residents from all parts of the city. And it's my hope that we'll be able to break ground on this new facility before the end of our term in 2018. We also expect to open the Innovation Centre at Bayview Yards before the end of this year as construction is already underway.
We also expect to open the Innovation Centre at Bayview Yards before the end of the year.
...example of collaboration than this amazing facility, which will be the new home of Invest Ottawa. Ottawa has been recognized as the most business-friendly, mid-sized city in the Western Hemisphere last year by the Financial Times. We're seeing jobs and investments return to Ottawa, but we need to make sure that entrepreneurs and business owners have the support they need. The Innovation Centre will be a one-stop shop for anyone with an idea they want to take from the drawing board to the marketplace. We want our businesses to launch, grow, and thrive. And of course, this facility will come at just the right moment, because everything we do should be looked at in front of the backdrop of the economy. We remain in challenging economic times.
We remain in challenging economic times.
Families are also seeing their personal investments, pension funds, and savings in decline, decline in value, rather, with changes in the market. We must continue to stay true to our principles: keeping taxes affordable, protecting the most vulnerable, investing in community infrastructure, and supporting job creators. When you are faced with tough times, you have two paths to take.
When you face a difficult time, you have two paths to take.
...may have heard chatter about in the pages of certain newspapers recently, it's the path of cynicism of those who are disappointed in themselves and their surroundings. It's the path of grumbling. No matter how historic the investments we're making, or how many awards the city receives about quality of life, or business friendliness, or sustainability, it will never be good enough. I prefer to take the other path, the path that looks forward, that recognizes that we'll never leapfrog cobblestone cities that are hundreds of years older than us. Instead, we will focus on ensuring a great quality of life for our citizens, on protecting our most vulnerable, on cutting commute times, on cleaning our water and air. That's the path on which we should be focused. I borrow a phrase from Bruce Lazenby, head of Invest Ottawa, who's with us here today, when I say "City building will always beat city bashing." We all love this city, and we will do everything we can to make it an even better place to raise a family and grow a business, and we will resolve ourselves for 2016 as we get ready to host the world in 2017. Let us collectively take this path of optimism, the path of pride, the path to building the best city in the most blessed country in the world. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that be it resolved that the Mayor's remarks given today at City Council meeting on January 27, 2016 be appended to the minutes of today's council meeting. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Minnet.
On the motion, carried. Thank you very much. Madam Deputy Clerk, the roll call, please.
Consulier Minnet.
Who's up?
Councillor Middick.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newspom.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Present.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Cherneschenko.
Present.
Councillor Cloutier.
Present.
Consulier Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have quorum.
Adoption de process verbal confirmation of the minutes from the 9th of December 2015. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de confidentaire. Communications and responses to inquiries as printed on the agenda. Regrets: Councillor Rick Shirelli advised that he would be absent from the City Council meeting of the 27th of January 2016. Motion to introduce reports. Councillor McKenney, seconded by Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled "Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 22nd of January 2016, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 11, and Planning Committee Report 19A be received and considered, and that the Rules of Procedure, subsection 29.3, be suspended to receive and consider planning, Committee Report 20, because of the urgency of the items contained in the report with specific reasons set out below.
On the motion as presented by Councillor McKenney, carried. Report: City Clerk and Solicitor, numéro un, Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions, Rapport de situation, received. Committee Reports: Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 11, Rapport numéro onze du comité de l'agriculture et des affaires rurales. Item number two: Manetteck Secondary Plan, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw, Plan secondaire de Manetteck, modification au plan officiel et au règlement de zonage. Carried. Item number three: Mud Creek Subwatershed Study, Étude de sub-essai de Rousseau-Mud. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 19A, numéro 19A. Councillor Blay, I believe, has a motion to defer this to the February 10th council meeting. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is on 4495, 4499, 4509, 455 in Innis Road.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Technical issue has arisen that the planning department wants to address with the applicant, so asked that the final decision be deferred till the next meeting, and that also that the bylaw will be submitted at the next meeting as well.
On the motion to defer, carried. Thank you. The next item is update to the Environmental Noise Control Guidelines, mise à jour des lignes directrices sur la lutte contre le bleu environnemental. Consulier Fleury.
It's just to mention the importance of these guidelines.
...had issues post-built regarding air conditioner units, different servers, and unfortunately, some of which have been on federal properties. I highlight the RCMP site at the Vanier Parkway for which residents in some areas of Sandy Hill continue to hear noise because of it. So, not to keep the item, I think it just demonstrates the importance of having those guidelines, respecting them here at the city because we do, but also pushing our federal partners as they redevelop properties to be cautious of those guidelines.
Great. On the report as presented, carried. Adopté, merci. Planning Committee Report Number 20, Rapport numéro 20, Application to Demolish 281, 283 Cumberland Street and Application for New Construction at 281, 283 Cumberland, 287 Cumberland, and 207, 209 Murray Street, properties located within the Lower Town West Heritage Conservation District. I just had a question to Mr. Moser. As you know, we've had many years of challenges with the owner of these properties, and I want assurance that while we're giving permission to demolish the home, that it will not be demolished until we are guaranteed that work will begin on the former school, because we've been down this path before, where we've been given all sorts of promises, then the building is demolished, and then the work doesn't begin. So can you give us assurance that we are going to monitor this very carefully, and the building doesn't come down until we have assurance that the work is going to begin on the other property? Because quite frankly, that has been an eyesore in the byword market for a long, long time.
Yes, Your Worship. The recommendation one speaks to that the approval of the demolition will not take place until all the appropriate planning applications have, you know, been approved. So there's requirement for a site plan that will have to be done, demolition permits, all of that will have to take place. Also, the recommendation number five speaks to the, you know, staff being proactive and seeking, you know, a progress report from the applicant, says, and give an update in six months. Mrs. Snedden this morning told me that it's our intention to, on a monthly basis, you know, have a progress discussion with the applicant, so we're going to be proactive in that, and we will need other applications to be approved before the demolition will take place.
Great, thank you. So on the motion, carried. The second, Councillor Leeper. Item number seven is application to demolish the Bradley Craig barn, 590 Hazeldeen Road. Demand de la demolition de la grande Bradley Craig, propriété située au 590 chemin Hazeldeen. Carried.
Descent.
Desents by Councillors Leeper, McKenney, and Newspom. Thank you. Item number eight: Park Development Charge, 335 Sallara, 1191 Montreal Road, 175 Main Street. Rédervance de management du parc 335 Boulevard Sallara, 1191 Chemin Montreal, et 175 Rue Main. Carried, adopté, merci. Does anyone wish anything to be removed from the bulk consent agenda? No. On the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried, adopté. Motion to adopt reports. Councillors McKenney, seconded by Brockington, please.
Yes, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled "Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 22nd of January 2016, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 11, and Planning Committee Reports 19A and 20 be received and adopted as amended.
Thank you. On the motion, carried, adopté. Motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure. Councillor Cherneschenko, seconded by Councillor Egli. I believe there's a time-sensitive issue on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Cherneschenko, if you'd like to introduce the motion, please.
Thank you very much. As councillors might have followed, the provincial government has made a significant amount of money available for electric vehicle charging infrastructure in the province, and naturally, as this was something the City of Ottawa was interested in encouraging more of in the first place, being able to access or partner in order to access some of that money makes sense for us. There are a number of consortia who have basically are putting in applications to go after all or a good chunk of that money in order to build out systems in the province, and our own staff have been in conversation with all of those. This motion effectively gives to Mr. Wiley the delegated authority to continue conversations and to prepare a letter of support for any or all of those applications if we deem that they meet the interests of the City of Ottawa. It is time-sensitive, given a February 12th, I believe it is, deadline, so it's essentially we have the ability then for our staff to write those letters of support.
Great, good initiative. On the motion, carried. Thank you for that. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure at this time? A notice of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. We have Councillor McKenney, seconded by Councillor Cloutier. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a notice of motion for a street closure for the Glow Fair, the Bank Street BIA's annual street fair in mid-June, and it's just simply a road closure for Bank Street from Slater to James, Gloucester Street from O'Connor Street to Bank, from 1 p.m. Friday, June 17th, 6 a.m. to, sorry, to Sunday, June 19th, and we'll be bringing that next week, or next council.
Great, thank you very much. The next notice of motion is moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Middick. As you know, we are in the process of putting our 2017 bids together, and one of the requirements of the CFL is a motion from council, and we'll bring this forward at the next motion, and it's been vetted through city staff and the seat committee, and we have to have it in within the next several weeks, because obviously we want to, A, win the bid, and then, B, start planning for what should be a terrific Grey Cup game in Ottawa at the new TD Place. So that will come forward at the next meeting. Are there any other notices of motion? No. Notice of intent from the Election Compliance Audit Committee to submit a report for consideration at the 10th of February 2016 council meeting. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor McKenney and Brockington, s'il vous plaît.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed with the exception of bylaw, a bylaw of the City of Ottawa to amend, bylaw number 2008-250 of the City of Ottawa to change the zoning of lands known municipally as 4495, 4499, 4509, and 4515 Innis Road, which is to be deferred to the council meeting of February 10, 2016.
Merci. On the confirmation bylaw, carried, adopté. I've one written inquiry. Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Inquiry for staff. Would staff please describe its proposed approach to review the city's levels and types of operational and capital reserves and anticipated timing for a report back to council?
Thank you. Councillor McKenney, seconded by Councillor Brockington, adjournment.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 27th of January 2016 be adjourned.
Just before that, confirmation bylaw. Apologize, councillor.
That was his fault.
It's always my fault.
I'm just following. That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 27th of January 2016.
The confirmation, carried, adopté, and adjournment.
And that the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 27th of January 2016 be adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you. Merci. Meeting adjourned, and Happy New Year. Meeting adjourned and happy new year.